They were rolling, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have to have technical support in order to begin, so...
Need some new equipment.
Please, Roger. A pledge and then a invocation. Flag's over there tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this Christmas season. We thank you for your son, and we thank you that we can live in a country where we can gather like this, that we have the freedoms that you have given us under the Constitution. And may we put off our anger, our wrath, and our malice, and let us be peaceful. And with the peace of God, rule in our hearts, and let us be thankful. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Please, receive.
Come out like I wrote it.
Roll call, please. As long as it's just a flight out.
I don't know. Got to put it across like this.
College guys for not being really here. Moss?
Aye.
Burkey?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Jovic?
Here.
Geddy?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mack?
Here.
Byalata?
Here.
Durlo?
Here.
We have a quorum. All in present. Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Those of you out in the public need an agenda, it'll be on the screen intermittently between packet items, so... Or in the back table. And if... Is there a sign-in back there, Dan?
Yes, please sign in.
Please sign in, and if you would like to speak, raise your hand. You're able to speak at any agenda item typically, and raise your hand, recognize yourself if you're representing a group or yourself. And we appreciate you came to the podium. We've got a sound system set up now. It's a little better than we've had before, so the microphones that can record, so Dan's in a beta mode right now, I think, trying to get us all to work, so we appreciate your cooperation if you want to participate. So, back to the agenda. It's fairly lengthy, so try and average three to five minutes per agenda, even if we can, when we get to that point, try and move the meeting along. Some items may take longer, so the average might be better for some small items, but it's a lengthy agenda tonight.
For 11 and 12, is Dr. Kelsey here?
Dr. Kelsey will not be here.
So can we scratch 11 and 12, because I don't see Martinez either?
They may not have to be present for us to deal with that, depending on how we act on that, so...
Okay.
I think we leave those agenda items on. That was continued from last meeting.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda has been discussed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Approval of previous meeting minutes. I've got a couple of small edits on item 12 in the minutes. It's back, depending on how it's printed out. If you've got the printed copy in front of you, stop at page six, I think, if that's self-printed. Just that chair of the newer state of South Dakota Water Board is their fifth to sixth meeting, so I just wanted to clarify, five to sixth December. We can add the word December, the month December in there to clarify that that is what that meant, five to sixth of December would have been our meeting. Then the following sentence, legal counsel, we spell C-O-U-N-S-E-L. And last page, comments by Galen Peestratt. Mueller says monthly meetings been considered and budgeted for. I'd just like to insert the word "have been," have been considered and budgeted for, so... Dan, I can give you a copy of these notes if you wish, but I'm finished. So, those are edits I picked up. Otherwise, very good thorough minutes. Any other additions, deletions, corrections?
Director Williams, did you have the... Was that the same thing?
That was the same thing. I think my attention caught the Ms. Jones' counsel.
I'll move approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
As amended?
I take motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, I heard you were...
Yes, as amended.
Second, motion second.
I'll second that.
Byalata or Durlo? Keep going on.
Do you want to do that?
However you want to do it. Burkey, Byalata. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Dan, I'll give you these in reference. And Bob, do you have a trade report?
Started a new filing system. Do you have a trade report?
Yes, I do. See if I can fill the screen and still have a review.
Do you have a different one?
Okay. Revenue received, 2018, so far this year, we've gotten $223,725.07. The funds on hand is $481,958.32. Director expenses, $5,899.31. Total administrative expenses, $16,354.48. The total legal counsel fees, $76,772.21. And these included contracts for both H2E early in the year and Dan's services as Let's see, we're a little bit under what we budgeted for so far, and this being the last meeting of the year. We budgeted for $95,250. We're now at the $76,722.21. It's about $18,477.79 under budget. The total water projects paid out so far this year, $86,360.10. And total expenditures year-to-date, $163,132.31. Funds remaining, $53,547.89.
How much question, Dan?
How much did you say we actually had in the bank now? Four hundred and some thousand, you said?
Yeah. Let's see...
Is that tan bar up there?
Funds on hand, third of the way down.
Oh, okay, I see it now. Okay, thank you.
The funds on hand are $481,000.
Okay, I see it now, thank you.
Sure, Dan.
So just to clarify, the remaining here is what we haven't spent, that was budgeted.
Yeah.
So, that's not how much we have left.
Say that again.
This $53,000 is how much we are under budget. We have not spent from what was budgeted.
We were budgeted $95,250.
Ninety-five, two-hundred?
Yep.
Oh, there it is.
And we...
Okay. Thank you.
Just to make sure.
Well, that... Okay. Yeah, this is the total. That $95,000 is budgeted. So it's maybe not quite labeled clearly.
You've got admin budget and project budget separated there, so you've got surplus in both sections.
Is the total remaining $18,477?
Unspent.
Unspent.
Admin budget.
That's just for the...
I want to piggyback.
That's just the admin budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the projects budget is the lower right-hand corner.
Can we ever get this straightened out on that Rapid Creek settlement? Can you like... USGS, Canulete Settlement. See, we still got $17,000.
Then we have to pay USGS.
That's still outstanding. It needs to be paid yet.
And we've got an agreement that USGS will budget, that part of the budget will be paid by June, and that's when the funds run out.
Okay. It's supposed to be coming to an end here pretty soon.
They've extended that due to the fact that the dredging had not begun, so they pushed it out as far as they possibly could. June 19 is cut-off date full.
Yeah, that is agenda item eight, so that's...
It is.
I have news on that.
Roll some thunder, but yes, more information will be coming forth. Any other questions, comments on the trade report? Very well.
Motion to approve the report?
Motion approved from Byalata.
I'm seconding that.
Seconded by Durlo. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Our motion carries. Item seven, chairman's comments. First thing I'd like to do is say thank you to the citizens of Painton County and Area Three, District Three, however you want to table it, and appreciate working with each one of you for the...
Oh, yeah.
Whatever months or years, whatever it could have been, so, short-term, long-term, whatever the case may be, enjoyed all of your assistance, your thoughts, all of your wisdom.
I'll still be working.
I said wisdom when I had him, I don't know how to get that. Anyway, yeah. Welcome aboard again. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, serving the citizens is not a slighted job. It's important. The voters said we'll do this for a while. I've been fortunate enough, or unfortunate enough, whatever the case may be, to be selected chair for the last three years, so appreciate that opportunity as well, and working with all of you, executive members, et cetera, so just wanted to keep that on the record. So, the item behind my comments are an update on the D E N R declared to our ruling request. Chuck Jasper's name is not there, but I will call him up to the podium to give us an update. This has been a bubbler since March, and since we are representative government here, we also represent citizens and their property rights. So, the... Some of the slight that's been thrown our way, is collectively our way, in this issue by whatever sources, be it media or parties or people out of the general mainstream populace, some of it's misinformation, some of it's wrong, some of it's twisted, some of it's absolutely in our grill, so to speak. So, Chuck, would you like to give us an update status? Should I start paraphrasing? You want to fill in where I miss it?
Go ahead.
The city and the county have each acted in opposition to our request for a declaratory ruling to the South Dakota Water Management Board. In addition to that, we have requested an administrative law judge hear our case, and they have both, the city and the county, risen up to oppose that request as well versus the Water Management Board to hear this. The first action of the opposition to our request postponed it at least 20 days, which pushes it all the way to at least March if the Water Management Board hears this. The administrative law judge requests, which is a hearing examiner, we have that choice under statute to do that. I don't know the timeline on something like that, so the board will be fresh and new in January, and depending on the work, if we get notice yet this month that we have a hearing, probably hustle and try and do that. I don't know if Chuck, I can bring you up now. You've also given us an official position, Chuck, I believe, for a notice to the South Dakota Water Management Board. I don't know if you want to read that out. You gave it to me, I don't have copies of anybody else yet, you just gave this to me, so... Would you care to come up and give us an update of what you know, please?
Sure. Just to bring you up to speed, the first thing I did was file, excuse me, a petition to have the matter heard before the Water Board, and then the city and the county, as Mike pointed out, filed their objections. And then, of course, the other thing we did, we had an executive board meeting, and I explained some of the options. At that time, we had the option of asking for a delay or continuance, if you will, which would have automatically continued it beyond this December hearing, which had initially been set. But the county, in their response and objections, also asked for it to be continued, as did the city, and that then would, at least in theory, push it on to the March Water Board hearing. The other thing we talked about was whether or not we wanted to ask for, excuse me, a hearing before the Office of Hearing Examiners, or in other words, have an administrative law judge hear the matter. If an administrative law judge hears the matter, they will produce findings of fact, conclusions of law based on those findings of fact, any recommended decision. Then the Water Board has the right to either accept or reject that recommended decision, okay? And then when we made that request to have the Office of Hearing Examiners hear it, as Mike pointed out, the city and the county both filed objections, saying we're not entitled to that hearing, and that's where it stands at this point. I don't know if someone in the administrative law judge will make the decision, or who's going to make the decision. I don't have that answer, but that's where it stands at present. We're waiting to hear back from either D E N R or the Administrative Office of the Hearing Examiners as to what takes place next. I expect it will be a hearing here.
Chuck, can you talk to the label contested case?
I didn't bring the statute with me, but the statute specifically points out, if it's a contested case, under certain circumstances, you are entitled to a hearing before the Office of Hearing Examiners. And a contested case, the D E N R says this is a contested case, the Office of Hearing Examiners has said it's going to be treated as a contested case, so then the question that comes up is, is there a fiduciary or financial interest concerned? Position we've taken is, because it is the city and the county that are charging for this observation, not inspection, as I might point out, the county and the city is calling it, it's not inspection, because we don't have an inspector, it's merely an observation, and if that is taken away, that you have to comply with that, we've taken the position that that is a financial situation that is imposed on the landowners. And at present, the position is, landowners, if they had their septic system installed prior to February 28, 1975, they're exempt, and if that exemption is removed, it's our position, they're losing a property right, and therefore it is a financial implication. Does that answer your question, Mike?
I believe so. Anybody else have...
Anybody else? Yes.
So, my understanding of what we were looking for here is, we were simply asking the state if a law means what the law says, right?
In essence, that's what it comes down to.
There's a law.
It's not a law, it's a rule.
Okay.
It's an administrative rule, which has the force and effect of a law.
Okay. So all we're doing is, is we've asked the state, as another state agency, which we are, if a law means, or if a rule means what it says, right?
That pretty well sums it up, yes.
Okay. So, why would the city and county object to that being heard, to make a decision if a law means what it says? I mean, is that not just obvious on its face?
Well, if I may, Mike and I met with the city attorney, who was here tonight.
The president will speak when you're finished.
And we'll give him an opportunity to address that. It's our position that they really don't have a dog in this fight, but they've taken the position they do, and that's apparently what the D E N R figures makes it a contested hearing, or a contested matter. Does that help?
Yeah.
Mr. Landine, you have care to come up?
Certainly.
Either share the podium or come up to it.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joel Landine, I'm the city attorney for the city of Rapid City. And I saw the discussion at the last meeting and listened to it, and decided, when I saw this item on the agenda, and after speaking with Mike and Mr. Jasper, that it would probably be a good idea for me to just show up in case there was some discussion and to answer some questions. So, this gets a little complicated, but the state of South Dakota has adopted some administrative rules that apply to all septic systems in the state of South Dakota. It's like the minimum level of regulation wherever you live in the state of South Dakota. And that is the rule that keeps getting cited. In the state, when they adopted those rules, they adopted an exception that said, if your septic system was built before 1976, that you're not covered under these regulations, okay? Separately from those state regulations, the city and county both adopted regulations of septic systems. And we believe we have the authority to do so under the city's police powers and the county's police powers. And those powers are the city and the county's ability to regulate things to protect the general public's health, safety, and welfare. So we adopted regulations. So, the administrative rules that are being cited, those aren't the regulations under which we're governing or which we're regulating septic systems in Rapid City or Pennington County. We have our own authority by which we adopt the regulations to regulate septic systems. So, that exception doesn't apply to us. So, the reason we're objecting to the Water Management Board hearing this is procedurally, that's not their role. They are a bunch of laypeople who are not law-trained, and what you're really saying is, did the state preempt the city's ability or the county's ability to regulate septic systems? That's a legal question. So that question should be presented to a court and to a judge. And I've expressed this to Mr. Mueller and to Mr. Jasper, that we believe that if you did want to challenge this or get a ruling of whether or not the city has the ability to adopt these regulations and the applicability of the administrative rules, that the proper venue for that is a court of law, not the management board.
Then may I ask, why do you guys want to not want it heard by an administrative law judge, who you, by your own admission, would be the perfect person to hear this?
It's not my admission that it would be the perfect person to hear this.
Well, you said not to give it to the laypeople on the board, it should go to a court, to a judge.
Correct. It's not... The concern we have is, by going the administrative route, you're trying to, you're trying to insert a square peg in a round hole. That's why, that's why the Department of Environment is struggling with it. They view it as a contested... You're really asking for, this is a question of law, it's not a question of fact. Everyone agrees what the ordinances are, everybody agrees what the city regulations are. It's a question of law. The administrative law judge is used to determine what the facts are. That's how the administrative agency is using administrative law judges. They take evidence and witnesses. We don't need evidence or witnesses, but at the end of the day, ultimately, the board decides, makes the decision. Well, you're asking the board to make a legal decision whether or not the city has the legal authority to regulate septic systems, or if the state regulations have preempted the city and the county's authority. That is a question for a judge, a circuit court judge, not an administrative law judge.
But do you understand the city isn't regulating septic systems? You're asking a third-party vendor to regulate the septic systems by hiring a non-inspector? By having just a pumper come out and say it's good or not good?
I understand that the city is regulating it, but instead of hiring inspectors, you know, one of the things that we looked at when this ordinance was adopted is, we don't want to create a whole new bureaucracy, because frankly, we wouldn't have a $20 fee, license fee, if we had to go out and hire inspectors and a whole bunch of staff to go out and look at the septic systems and administer this. So the compromise that was made to adopt the licensing regimen and try to at least have somebody take a look at the system to make sure it's functioning, was to ask the haulers or the pumpers to take the look at the system and certify that, yeah, we've looked at it, it appears to be functioning correctly. If it does not appear to be functioning correctly, then they let us know, and then we can address it, so we can try to ensure that the systems are functioning correctly. So, yeah, I think that both the city and the county understood what they were doing, and they made a compromise. Is that ideal? Is that traditionally how it's done? No, but that was the compromise that was made to avoid have to hire new staff and add a bunch of additional costs that ultimately was going to be paid on to the people that were required to pay the fees.
All right. So, you suggested that the Water Management Board is made up of laypeople, so therefore they're not qualified to make a decision like this, I guess, in your mind?
Well, a legal decision over the authority of the city versus the authority of the state and how that would interact with each other.
What do you see as the authority of the Water Management Board?
I see the Water Management Board over the rules related to their area that they're dealing with. Now, I haven't gone through the Water Management Board.
What's their area? The Water Management Board, what is their area?
Correct. It is regulating, I assume, the waters of the state of South Dakota.
Okay.
However...
So how would this issue not fall under their authority?
And the rules, so the rules that are being cited, yes, I would say those fall under their authority.
Okay.
But the question is...
So what's the problem?
The question is, it's an issue of authority. It's not an issue of whether their regulations are proper.
You just said that it falls under their authority.
It's an issue of whether or not the city has separate authority from the Water Board to regulate septic systems.
All right. I've got a... So, to me, that makes absolutely no sense. If the Water Board has authority, which you admitted to, why don't they have the authority? I mean, this is like, we're asking, you know, I guess maybe in law school this makes sense, but maybe to the rest of the world it doesn't. You know, it seems like we're chasing our tail here. We're simply asking a question, does a law mean what it says? And then, does this water... And then, does, does this water management board have the authority to regulate water? I mean, this is nonsensical.
Let me put it this way, and maybe you would understand it better if I put it this way. The state has authority and sovereignty to regulate water within the state of South Dakota, correct?
Sure.
The federal government has the ability to regulate water within the state of South Dakota, correct?
Probably parts of it, yes.
Okay. So, if there was a dispute between the federal government and the state of South Dakota over a regulation, they had different regulations, would you go to the state water management board to determine who actually had legal authority, if the federal government had the legal authority?
I think normally, the way it works, which was to my second question here, I don't understand how you think that city and county regulations or ordinances trump state law. How does that work?
Because there's a lot of instances, especially in South Dakota, you have a lot of rural areas. So, generally, the amount of regulation that you're subject to is directly related to where you live. If you live in a city, you're subject to a lot more regulation than if you live in a rural area. So, the state regulations, when you have a regulation like the one that you're, you're talking about, it is applicable to the state as a whole, both rural and urbanized areas. It is not unusual, you, you characterize it as trumping state law. It's not trumping state law.
Sure is.
It is, no, it is not.
State law in this case says that systems that were constructed prior to a certain date are exempt? And then, Pennington County and the city are coming in and say, no, they're not, they're not exempt.
They're not exempt from inspection.
We're not, we're not going to follow that state law because we believe that we have a higher authority in this case. How is that?
That actually is fairly common, where we regulate...
You can ignore state law and establish your own ordinances that circumvent state law?
We can be more restrictive than state law, we cannot be less restrictive than state law generally.
Yeah, that, that was my question.
I was going to say the same thing. The city and county can have more stringent regulations than the state.
That is pretty typical.
They cannot, because the state establishes minimum standards for whatever they're regulating. And the city and the county establishes regulations for what they think is appropriate for their particular boundaries. And I think that's the difference that we're, that we're talking about here, is the city can't have more stringent regulations and so can the county than the state of South Dakota, or, or the federal government.
Correct.
That makes absolutely no sense. I mean, in regard to this issue, where the state says, if you construct it before this certain date, you're exempt.
We don't have to exempt it, but you know, that was a policy question that the councils and the county commission had to answer, is do we want to exempt those? And they chose not to. You know, a billboard is a good example. In the state of South Dakota, the maximum size of a billboard is 1,200 square feet. In the city of Rapid City, it was 250 square feet. Now, there's two different sized restrictions. And in the county, it's, I think, 500 square feet.
James, I've got to come to Ken here.
Why is it then that we ran DNA tests? We authorized them, we paid for DNA tests, it says, there's no human waste, or less than 1% human waste in the water coming all the way down to Rapid City? So... And yet, Rapid City itself dumps, was it 3.2 million extra bacteria into the creek? They exempt themselves, but we can prove that we're not contaminating the water, but you won't exempt us. That really makes no sense.
Well, and Steve, that's where I, I kind of take issue, is that there's always two questions. So, there's a legal question of whether or not the city and the county have the authority to regulate septic and have a regulation that's different than what the state has. Then there's a policy question, or a question of whether or not these regulations are needed or a good idea. And that is a political question that the council and the county commission have already answered. That's not for me to answer.
So, in other words, don't let the people make the decision, let's get a little group of people over here to make that decision for them.
Well, okay, well, to point out, the representatives of the people are the county commission and the city council.
This also.
Well, you also, but the representatives of the people, all the people in Pennington County have made that decision. And Mr. Farabee was on the county commission, disagreed with it, and he couldn't get it politically changed. So, it's hard for us not to see this as a collateral attack, because you couldn't be successful on the, on the political side in front of the county commission and the city council. And while it's being characterized as just, we just want to know if the ordinance or the rule says what it says it says, I think Mr. Jasper made pretty clear that you're taking a position that this is not a valid exercise, and the comments frankly made here, that the board is taking a position that this is not a valid exercise of the city authority, and it's pretty clear believes that this, this rule trumps any city ordinance or county, county ordinance.
Nathan, I have James, and I'll come back to you.
Good.
I have one question that is a rule of law. The grandfather clause. It's illegal to group in people in a new ordinance that are already living under the current law to change their property rights. How does the grandfather clause not hold water?
Because we're not prosecuting anybody, or we're not requiring them, we're not...
That's not true. You've prosecuted at least two that I know of.
Well, you didn't let me finish.
Okay.
We're not prosecuting them for their past behavior. The requirement is they get an observation or inspection, however you want to call it, that they get the license. So, they're not being punished for not having the license before the ordinance was adopted. They're being prosecuted for failure to comply with the regulation that you have a license. Just because you existed prior to the requirement there's a license, once there's a requirement for a license, doesn't exempt you in perpetuity from the requirement to get a license. If you owned a restaurant and the state or the city adopted a rule that said you need to get licensed, you can't go back and say, well, I existed prior to the requirement to get a license, so I'm not going to get licensed.
Actually, that is...
No.
I, I can tell you, right now, there's several pawn shops in the state that existed for the pawn shop law. And they're able to operate pre-existing law for that very reason. It was already come down by the courts. So, you're telling me, as a business, businesses have different rights than homeowner rights. And homeowners who lived in their house since 1978, the system followed the administrative rule, their property rights can't change by a new ordinance. They're grandfathered in by the old ordinance. And the old ordinance said there was no law, or they had to follow the state minimum. So, why does the state minimum not affect those that were grandfathered into the system and have not had inspections, pumping, or any other service done after the ordinance went into effect? Because after the ordinance goes into effect, if they have worked on their system, sure, they're no longer in the old ordinance, they're in a new system.
Because the requirement is for licensure and to get the inspection. It does not require that they update their system, unless it would be in failure, and then it would, I don't know the particulars of the county or how that would occur, but generally, when you talk about legal non-conforming uses, what happens is you look at the value of whatever work is required. So, if it's a hundred dollar fix, you are able to maintain your non-compliant system. And if it's a fix that's virtually the cost of replacing it, then you're required to place it. I'm not aware of that having ever happened or being enforced, I'm not saying it hasn't. But, under the law, it is not, he's not being prosecuted, nobody has been prosecuted for actions they did before the law was adopted. And that has already been addressed by a court, by the judge, in Mr. Farabee's case. He raised that issue as a defense, that this isn't applicable to me, that it is an ex post facto, or that it's, that I'm grandfathered in, and the court rejected it. So, it's not just me up here saying it, the courts have already looked at that issue and rejected it.
The Supreme Court. Follow-up nation, we'll get done here soon.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. So, I'm somewhat familiar with the courts, and I mean, based on what I've seen, it, it doesn't, it seemed more like a kangaroo court. It seemed like the thing was rigged against Mr. Farabee. This issue is not revolving around Mr. Farabee, okay? We had another individual that came in and appeared twice before this board, similarly situated to Mr. Farabee. Mr. Farabee is just the lightning rod that's been taking all the hits for, for everybody out there that has the same issue, okay? I, I don't know how you get away with the grandfather clause. I mean, it's like, it's like buying an old house and then having a city come in and say, oh, well, you've got old knob and spool wiring, you're supposed to update everything in your house to modern code. And if you don't do it, we're going to cite you. Now, we're not going to prosecute you for not having that prior, not having it updated prior to us passing our law, but after we pass the law, we're going to come after you. That's crazy. This whole thing is crazy. I, I don't understand the basic premise of if a state law says that somebody is exempt, how, so anybody else can come in and say, no, you're not exempt, we've decided that you're not. We don't care what the state law says.
Well, and I don't, I think at this point, it's pretty clear, I don't think I can explain it to you, but I would take issue with your example. We don't go out and look at a septic system and say, you're not compliant, you need to bring it into compliance. We look at...
What's the purpose of doing this, then?
To make sure it's functioning. If it's non-compliant and it's functioning...
Who do you think the first person is that's going to know if it's not functioning?
Hopefully, the homeowner.
Yeah, the homeowner will. And you know what? They're going to want to get it functioning right away. And if somebody's got 80 acres of land, in the case of Mr. Farabee, around him, guess what? Even if it's not functioning, it's not going to hurt anybody. And by all accounts, Mr. Farabee's system is working just fine, and yet you're coming after him, and you're coming after other people also. They would be the people, if there was a problem with their system, they would get it fixed, because they would need to. Because their toilet function is pretty high on the list of things that people want to maintain in their home.
But you're saying essentially that we should just trust that people would take care of this on their own?
I'm saying this is government overreach.
But that is a political question. And if that was what the majority of people in Rapid City and Pennington County thought, then I can guarantee you that the county...
That's what several of their elected representatives thought, yeah. But several of the people on this board don't believe that. And we believe that state law trumps city and county ordinances.
But I would say in the last, if you want to look at the will of the people in the last election, a number of board members on this board were defeated. So...
Yeah, we're going to discuss that.
And if you look at the city council or the county commission, you can't say the same thing. I think it's fair to say, if the people of Pennington County and Rapid City agreed that it was government overreach and that that shouldn't be regulated, those ordinances would be repealed.
I think if the city of Rapid City and the people in Pennington County got the straight poop on what's happening here, they would definitely go the other way. I think they've been, they've been fed a, a bunch of propaganda by a number of people, including the Rapid City Journal. And I'm not happy about it.
Jeanette.
Wasn't somebody ahead of me? I didn't want to...
You were up next, you were next hand, so... I'll go to James. Go to James.
I've got something real fast.
Okay.
And Jeanette, Jeanette Landin.
Do you know how the city is contacting folks at all about this septic issue?
I believe we send out a notice to the people that were aware have a septic. I have a, I have one, I got a notice in the mail, and...
Do you know how they get the list?
No, I don't know off the top of my head.
If I can give you a little bit of history of what's been going on, anybody who doesn't, isn't on the city water system, countywide, with a building, they sent notices to. I know of at least a dozen people that had to come in and argue and say, what is this inspection crap about a septic system? They said, for your building here. The building's got no water on it, it was a storage facility. No water, no sewer, no septic.
So, it's just...
They had to bring people out onto their property and say, where's the septic system? To prove without getting fined.
You have to buy a permit.
Even though they didn't have a septic system.
That's a blanketing. So, Jeanette, can you finish us here for this item?
Okay. In addition to this issue, West Dakota Water Development District, our board has voted to, to make payment to an attorney to fight this particular issue. And I feel that, although I sympathize with them, I feel that it's a misuse of law, of, of our, our taxpayers' money, that we would help fight one or two man's personal issues. And it, and it has come along, and it has been associated with this particular issue that we're talking about right now.
Matter of record, DNR sent us a letter, bring legal counsel, which would have been December 5th, 6th meeting. We had no choice in hiring legal counsel, unless somebody offered to do it, Joel did it for free, we'd probably accept. But that's, that's the hiring.
And I think everything is, like Nathan said, it's more than one or two people.
That's, so I'm sorry, I'm going to correct you, Jeanette, because of that, that comment. So, Nathan?
I was just going to state exactly that. That's not an inaccurate characterization of, of what happened, so.
Well, I just want to say, if you're asking me if I agree with that statement, I'm not your attorney, and I'm not going to opine on the legality or the...
I just wanted that to be in, I just wanted that to be in the record.
Chuck?
I'd like to respond when Mr. Landin is finished.
Will he finish?
I do have, I do want, I want to thank you for coming down here for the city of Rapid City. I know it probably wasn't easy to come down here, and I'm glad you did, because I think there's, there's been a lot of misinformation given here without input from, from the city and from the county, and I appreciate you coming down here to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a few comments in relation to what Mr. Landin made some comments to. The first thing I want to point out is, cities have specific authorities granted to them by the legislature. Counties have specific authorities granted to them by the legislature. The cities have a lot more authority than the counties have. But our Supreme Court has said, these entities created by the legislature, that is, the cities and the counties, and you can put townships in the same category, only have the specific authority granted. Now, I'm going to give you one example. I'm reading SDCL 46-2-21. I said at the last meeting I would bring this information. The statute reads, "A board of county commissioners may appropriate funds for the purpose of defraying the expense of having geologic or groundwater studies conducted within its county." That's the only statute I have found that makes mention of counties having authority over water, other than the county says we have it under our general police powers for the general welfare. The city has taken the same approach, that it comes under their general welfare clause, rather than a specific statute saying they have this authority. So, as I said, the Supreme Court has indicated on more than one occasion, you only have the authority specifically granted to you. Now, Mr. Landin also made reference to, well, we really need to have a court decide this because it's a rule. But by the same token, let me give you an analogy that I'm sure he'll agree is valid. There are state laws that make certain statements, and entities can obtain Attorney General's opinions as to what those laws mean. And that's binding until a court turns around and says it says otherwise, or says, yes, we agree with the Attorney General's opinion. And consequently, I would analogize, you're asking another board, which courts have numerous times said, agencies write rules, therefore, they're the experts on what those rules mean, therefore, they're... therefore they're entitled, and we should allow them to interpret what their rules mean. And as I see it, that's the only thing that is being asked here, is you have a rule, what does it mean? Does it mean what it says? Now, when we get right down to it, the specific rule we're talking about, seventy-four fifty-three oh-one oh-four, says that you have this exemption if your system has not been changed, has not been shown to cause groundwater to be polluted, or has not allowed wastewater to the surface. And what the city and county are saying is, we need, you need to have a permit to operate this so that we can go out and look whether this is happening or not. Well, maybe I'm taking too stringent, stringent a standpoint, but if you're suspected of committing a crime, they need a warrant to search your property. Well, would that be analogous to this? They're trying to backdoor getting a warrant? That's one approach you can take. So, anyway, those are just a couple of points I wanted to make. If you have other questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. The other thing I did bring, uh, was also the statute that, if I may, excuse me, S D C L forty-six dash two dash fifteen states, there is hereby created at the state, in the state treasury, a special fund. I'm looking at the wrong one. I'll take that back for a moment. Okay? Any questions?
You good, Doug? One, three.
So the-
It seems like, to me, the overriding question is, does the city and does the county have the right to establish stricter rules than the state statute?
As you're saying, do they or do they not have that right? Well, as Mr. Landin also pointed out, cities and counties can be more stringent than the state, unless, the magic word he used is preemption. So if, like, I'll use the FCC as an example. The reason hence you don't need a license for all these things, but yet you need a license for your C V, is because that is so highly regulated by the Federal Communications Commission, so cities and counties can't regulate things like what power you use, et cetera, et cetera, from a radio or a radar or things of that nature. I realize it's a kind of a clumsy example, but here, the Water Board has given, been given the authority to make the rules and regulations, which they have done. So then the question becomes, have they, by doing that, preempted the city and the county from being more stringent? Does that help you?
I'm going to Bob here.
I have a question about, uh, so in your, when you were looking at all the various laws and so forth, have we, what happens to the person that is in that one mile exclusion area that has no representation within the city, and the city's making him provide this type of law or rule? What, what log is in the authority? Is, is there a number for it?
I can't, I can't cite you the specific statute, but yes, the city does have certain authority outside their municipal limits, and there's, as you point out, a one mile radius. Or maybe I shouldn't say radius, but one mile beyond the boundary. Perhaps Mr. Landin can give you a statute. I can't off the top of my head.
Just coming back to that answer, your man.
I can't cite specifically the statute as part of the police, general police power of the general health, safety, welfare that, um, but what I'll say is, I would say generally it's meant if you're adjacent to the city and, and the city has regulations, and you're in a county that doesn't have any regulations, so somebody moves right outside the city limits and they're doing something, and it's harming the people in the city, it gives the city some authority. So I guess one of the, the concerns I have about that characterization is that the city has imposed this on the county residents against their will. I would just point out, the county commission has adopted the exact same ordinance. If the county commission, there's not any cases, and I've never been put in a position where I was told to enforce an ordinance that was directly contradictory to the county regulations, and I'm not aware of a case where that's been addressed. Now, on the one hand, there's no limitations on that, on that city power within the one mile, so you could take the argument that we could actually trump the county regulations. Now, I think if there was a situation where the city and the county regulations were completely inconsistent, and the city tried to enforce the city regulations on the county residents, I would, if I was a judge, I would have a lot of trouble with that.
They're doing that right now.
They're not.
With building permits. Everybody in the one mile buffer is required to get a city building permit, even though they don't work, live, or get to vote in the city.
But is that inconsistent with the county law?
Yes, because there's no county building permit.
No, I'm talking a direct inconsistency. And a lot of these things we do, like, I will talk, I'm not going to talk about, because I'm not prepared to talk about the building permits, but in the situation with the septic, there was an agreement between the county and the city that we would enforce within the one mile to help the county out, because we had more staff to do that than they did, and that they would then focus their efforts on the areas outside the one mile, and that would be a cost savings to the county, because they wouldn't have to hire additional staff to regulate it. Because most of the people are going to be within one mile of the city limits. So it reduced the number of people, so there was an understanding. The city is not doing this over the objection of the county. The county is in agreement with what the city is doing, and in fact, it works out well for both of us.
There are about eleven hundred and eighty or so of those types of folks out there in that one mile buffer. You got the numbers, I guess, too. Nathan, you have anything to finish?
Yeah. Um, this concept of, uh, city and county being able to, um, implement stricter regulations than what the state has, um, has been mentioned a couple of times here. And in my past experience, stricter would normally imply something like lower contaminant levels, uh, for a particular contaminant in water or wastewater. Um, in this case, we're not talking about that. There's, there's a specific exemption that was carved out by the state, and the city and county are trying to preempt, uh, state law. It's not a question of strict or less strict, it's a, it's a complete preemption of the law. Uh, and that's what I don't understand. Um, this, uh, to me, this doesn't make sense. I don't understand how the city and county can preempt something that's carved out specifically in state law. It's not less strict or, or more strict, it's a preemption.
Ken.
One thing that struck me a while ago, you said, oh, county, city has preemptive powers and so on. Why are we paying the Health Department? You know, that's a federal agency. If you have a problem, you call the feds, they'll come out and look at it, tell you where they need to replace it or not. They can tell you, have repairs. And anyway, the people that was on the original group that started this septic type thing, one was, didn't have a jack idea what the heck a septic tank worked like, and the other one, the guy that was on there, worked for the pumping system downtown. How are they going to vote? And, and when did, uh, the county and the city want to put restraints on this board to keep us from getting legal advice and representation? But yet you're paid by the city and county, and possibly the state or anybody else, to come up and fight for them, but they don't want anybody to be able to fight on our side, the people's side?
Okay. Nathan, thoroughly exhausted this one. We'll move on to item eight, game fishing parks update. Williams, you have something for us? A little of Galen's information?
Pretty simple and straightforward, should be, should take a second. And, uh, I got a chance to talk, um, with John Carr, Carrero, C A R R E I R O, at the game fishing parks department. He said that they have purchased the, uh, the bags that they'll be pumping, uh, the dirt into. Those will be delivered this spring. He suspected, he said that he anticipated that it would be March twenty nineteen when we expect delivery of those bags, and that at the, that time, it'll take two to three months to, uh, do the entire dredge project. So that-
Pushes it right out to at least June.
Yeah, we'll put it right up to the edge where we might have to think about, uh, additional sampling if you want to continue that project, because, uh, USGS will be sampling at longer intervals.
And I believe so in summary, he said it was still a good baseline that-
Yes.
-prior to dredging, even if the dredging doesn't start before June twenty nineteen.
Yep.
I thought, sorry, Anthony, sorry. Looking out the corner. Thank you.
You know, excuse me. Originally, when we started this off with the dredging, we got the dredger already set up and everything for them to do the job. Uh, they came back and asked us if we could take part of the money that was authorized for the dredging job to buy matting for. This matting was to keep the wash from the bottom of the lake from picking up with the duck goodies and so on like that, washing it downstream. Uh, we agreed with that, said they could use ten thousand dollars of that, for that matting. Now, I haven't heard a thing about these bags that they're going to be pumping into to, to haul the stuff off, and, uh, is that a new item that was up, or?
That's what we paid the hundred fifty thousand for.
For the bags.
We invested in the dredging machine, the bags and the filter system to pump the water through to collect the silk.
Okay.
A settlement. Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, is John, I can't remember-
Carrero?
He's, he's, was indicating he might be at the January meeting to update this.
Okay.
And there's eleven thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars left to pay, um, USGS for their final sample.
Right, okay. Very well. Any other questions on item eight? Item nine, Melody Jensen, welcome for attending. Three of our directors, I believe, came to one of your meetings out at the base. Uh, Box Ellsworth, what, a month or so ago, six weeks, maybe?
That meeting was on November first.
November first, okay. Thank you for your presence and information.
I'm Melody Jensen. I am the Restoration Program Manager for Ellsworth Air Force Base. My responsibilities is to manage the program for cleaning up the contamination from the base, whether it's in soil or groundwater. There's an emerging contaminant right now, and it's PFOS and PFOA, the perfluoroalkylene substances. They are a man-made chemical, they are very prevalent in our society. Your Teflon skillet, Scotch guard, it's the reason your cheese on your pizza delivery box doesn't stick to the box. Um, so they're very prevalent. Here at Ellsworth, they come from a firefighting foam that they use since the early seventies to put out petroleum-based fires.
I'm having trouble, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
It's locked up. Before, try to close it.
How many attended your meeting on November first?
Approximately sixty people. We have held, they call them our Restoration Advisory Board meetings. We hold, we used to hold them quarterly back in the late nineties, then they went semi-annual through most of the two thousands, and now we've been having them once a year for the last three or four years, and I would average two people at them. So this was a vast improvement. But I have a new topic that everybody's interested in. So we are probably going to look at holding them more frequently, now that there seems to be a bigger public interest again.
They, they do have copies of your presentation.
Okay.
Just if you want to refer to a slide.
Okay.
Since I can't see it.
Yeah, slide two is my overview. Um, the slide three is a timeline that I've gone through with-
We didn't get it. They got it over there.
Oh, we didn't pass it over the next.
They went up in public. You guys can share. Might just have the two over here.
Yep, it's Air Force, like an airplane out of it.
It's been a while. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, they needed one more.
You want to share a copy?
Yeah. John, something else? I heard everybody. My hearing's not great.
You know, I hate the question you just getting started off.
Thank you.
Uh, I originally went in the military in nineteen sixty-two, that was a couple of years back, but we used what they called a high-protein foam-
Yes.
-for centuries.
Yes.
Wouldn't they do, phase that out and bring in this?
They phased that out, and they went with this, um, perfluoroalkylene substance foam since about the early seventies.
Gee, we were still using that high protein on ships and so on.
Yeah.
Of course, it's got the sharks around, but, uh, you know.
So I've got a question. Uh, I was in attendance that year, um, one November, uh, presentation, and, uh, what we were told was that there is a new foam that's being used.
Yes.
But it sounds like that's of the same family-
It is.
-as this. So how do we know we're not going to go down the same road twenty years from now?
There's a couple of things that are happening differently, but the old foam, we'll refer to, we refer to it as our legacy foam, and it had C eight chains in it, it's a chemical thing, and you know, it's a number of carbon bonds on there. The new foam has six, so it's supposedly more environmentally friendly, and it will break down quicker in the environment than the old product did. But what the Air Force is doing now is, in the past, they would train with this foam, so they would go out to the fire training area and practice putting out fires and use the foam, and they no longer do that. So they have a different product to simulate the foam that they use in their regular training, and will only use the reformulated H triple F foam for actual fires.
Good. And how long does it take the new foam to break down?
I don't know that answer.
Good.
Um, if we want to go over, just off the handouts here, on slide three is the PFC timeline here at Ellsworth. In two thousand and eleven, it was first detected at Ellsworth as part of this broad agency announcement, and that is like a research project that the Air Force funds. They knew this was on the EPA's purview, and so the Air Force wanted to kind of see how big of a problem they could, it would be, so they sampled at Ellsworth and they found it. So in two thousand and thirteen, we funded a remedial investigation, and that is where you delineate the extents of the plume, and you characterize it, and you start looking at possible treatment solutions for it. In two thousand and fourteen, the Air Force also wanted to come and look at other areas that are not associated with fire training areas, things that we had it in fire suppression systems and hangars. So we looked at other areas where it was, um, stored at on base. We sampled at six areas, and we found it at those six areas. Um, it's, we've done a couple phases of fieldwork for the RI, but the big thing is in two thousand and sixteen, the EPA set what they call their lifetime health advisories for drinking water for only two compounds in there, PFOS and PFOA, and they said that seventy parts per trillion. In two thousand and sixteen, we had knew of one off-base well just south of Ellsworth, and we sampled that. It was above the health advisory, so we provided that person with an alternate water source. In two thousand and eighteen, we did additional fieldwork south of the base, off-base, got word that there could be some additional shallow drinking water wells, and so we also started looking off-base for shallow wells, and that's what we've been doing here since September. We've conducted three phases. Our first phase, we found twenty-four wells, twelve of them were drinking water wells, and ten of them were irrigation wells. The distinction between them is, is was it plumbed into your house, it was a drinking water well? If you used it to water livestock or gardens, then it was an irrigation well.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Dan?
Can you bring up, uh, number four, please?
Uh, he's trying.
He's trying, he's having trouble.
I think the screen capture software is interfering a little bit, but I can't stop it, I'll stop the recording, so.
Okay.
I'm kind of stuck here.
We identified 12 drinking water wells. Nine of those were above the EPA's lifetime health advisory. Of the 10 irrigation wells, eight detected above it. The reason for sampling irrigation wells was so we could get an idea where the, these contaminants would be off-base down in the Box Elder community. We conducted phase two of our off-base sampling, started on October 29th. We found 27 drinking water wells, but only two of those were above the health advisory. And this area would have been between Westgate Road, which is just west of Box Elder, and Bennett Road. And that's where these 27 wells were within that area. In phase three, we sampled 16 wells, 10 were drinking water wells, and six were irrigation wells. This area is primarily southeast of the base. And if you look on slide five, it will show the three different areas, and it also shows the sampling locations. I just got the results back on the phase three here today. And we have four wells, drinking water wells are still above the health advisory. They're down in the southern part of the phase three. So we are now coordinating a phase four effort to go out there and look further to the southeast. Fewer homes and people, we're getting, there's a lot more agricultural areas. People have, you know, several acres, probably ranches and farms.
What is this doing if they're using it for irrigation or feeding their life or for drinking water or whatnot? What is that doing for consumers of that?
Those pathways are being evaluated right now with the Health Departments of Health and the EPA. The EPA has only set a provisional health advisory. It's not a regulated compound yet, it's not an enforceable number yet. And they only looked at drinking water impacts. They have not evaluated other impacts from consuming your produce that may have been watered with contaminated water or consuming, you know, meat products from livestock that had drank this water.
Is this new information because that's different from what was presented on one November?
From toxicologists from the EPA.
Whoever he was.
Yes, he's the EPA.
He definitely made it clear that if it was watered with that water, then you should not eat it.
He did. And, you know, the EPA sets the health impacts, the EPA sets the exposure pathways that we evaluate, and the EPA sets the numbers that we need to look at to work to. And the only numbers that have been set so far is a drinking water health advisory. And so that is the only number that the Air Force right now is looking at addressing is drinking water impacts. And when the EPA establishes numbers for other exposure pathways, then we will look at those also.
I guess since, since we're talking about impacts, there were several people at that meeting that were wondering what kind of testing, medical testing, might be done for those that have been drinking this water for some time.
Yes.
Because of some of the impacts that were brought up.
Understand. And that is not something that the Air Force will be, you know, we go out and work towards whatever the regulatory agency set for us. And I don't know if those numbers are out there yet. I know there is some of that work being done, but I'm not aware of it, and I haven't really seen any of the data or the reports from it yet.
Does this, does this appear to anywhere else in our nation?
Oh, yes.
And the health effects, are they charted or recorded for any knowledgeable side effects?
There has been some very, very preliminary data on it. Like as in it could cause, or it could cause, there has not been really an established correlation yet that I know of.
That question was asked in somewhat a different way at the one November meeting, and it was answered by one of their experts that they had. Basically, there were significant impacts to internal organs that were associated with this, this contaminant, so.
Great.
I want to back up a little bit and touch on that, too. You said earlier that they had reformulated the, the most recent formula for firefighting.
Yes.
Okay. But it's still, would you use the word toxic?
No.
In other words, would it exceed the 70 parts per trillion that's currently the standard for the old formula in people's wells?
It possibly could, because this is a group of, excuse me, this is, when we analyze for this and these analytical suites that the laboratories run, there's like 16 compounds that they'll analyze for. The EPA has only set health advisories for two of them right now, and that's the PFOS and the PFOA. They probably, they do, they are in this reformulated foam, but at a much lower concentration.
So would it be fair to say that the new formula still poses a threat? It's just that it's not half-life, but it's, its breakdown is shorter.
Yes. And when I say that, I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to qualify that in that the Air Force says now that the EPA has set these health advisories, they have changed their processes in how they handle the product and how they use it. So as of right now, it will only at Ellsworth be used for actual fires that they need to put out. So all of the training in the past where they used this firefighting foam, they are now using a simulated type of a foam to practice putting it out. So they're not, we're not using it any longer on a regular basis.
So less would be used?
Yes, definitely, definitely less.
And can we assume that that will be washed off the runway? Or will it be contained?
It's only now used in specific areas in a controlled system where, at the fire training area, it's a concrete pad, and it is huge because they can drive fire trucks around and do circles. And then there's a lined pit off on the edges of it, so it collects this thing here, and they recycle that water. So a lot of that water is discharged to the environment.
So let's say, let's say for, for an example, if a bomber was coming in from the north and missed the runway or went off the runway for whatever reason in the soil, say on the south or the southwestern or southeastern end of the base, what would happen to that retardant after the, after the accident was, was put out?
There are now processes in place now that, you know, the EPA has set these numbers that we're working towards here, where the Air Force would work to recapture as much of this foam as we can. You know, in the past, before anybody had established any health impacts for it, and everybody assumed that this was a safe product because it's the same stuff you cook your eggs on in the morning, it was just allowed to dissipate into the environment. So now they recapture as much as they can, clean up what we can out of it. And we would have to then go out and assess that from the restoration program to see what we can do.
Okay.
To minimize the impacts or to reduce any, any environment.
Second question for me. I've been going over this, this, this map here of the sites that you've tested, and I noticed in phase one, most, most of the wells that you tested in that area, somewhere to the west and somewhere to the south.
Yep.
And those ones on the south were south of Interstate 90.
Yes.
And it looks to be all but perhaps one or two tested positive.
Yes. Okay, so if you look on this map here, and you see the solid red in the center there, that we call our former fire training area, this was the one that was used from the mid 50s up until the early 90s, and it was an unlined pit.
Okay.
So there was a lot of practicing putting on there, and there were no controls to keep that on the base.
Okay.
And so that is directly down gradient. So the groundwater flow in that part of the base is north to south.
So my next question would, would lead off that. In phase two, I see you did extensive testing to the west.
Yes.
And yet down here south of Interstate 90, where you had so many positive tests, it doesn't appear that perhaps two or three wells were tested?
We only tested, there just wasn't that many wells down in that area.
It's, it's all on Box Elder?
Most of them are on the city of Box Elder's water system, yes.
Was their water system tested?
Yes, they did in September. Box Elder's, Box Elder gets this drinking water from deep wells, they're approximately 4,500 feet deep. And they did test their water in September, and all came back like non-detect at the detection level. So the detection level now is like about 1.8 parts per trillion.
And, and in phase three, did you test Box Elder Creek?
We did take samples from Box Elder Creek back in the summer of 2017. Two samples for it, one sample. Box Elder Creek tested at about 99, if I remember correctly. So it's above the drinking water health advisories, but not significant. I mean, because I have some of them that are up in the thousands.
Do you think Box Elder Creek contributes to the Box Elder municipal water supply?
No, it does not. Box Elders, the geology here, where they get their water from, the wells are 4,500 feet deep, it's in the Madison Aquifer. Where we're finding this contamination is up near the surface in what we call the unconsolidated pier shale. When you get about 60 feet below the surface, you hit the consolidated pier shale. And this is hard, dense, and it's about 800 feet deep in this area.
Actually a barrier?
And it works as a great barrier.
Where was the?
I'm sorry. Bob's up here. Sorry.
I had a chance to sit through your entire presentation, too. And I understand, I didn't get a list.
Okay.
But there were 12 different organizations there or something like that.
Yes.
And was there a geology type group there as well?
Not from the Air Force. We've had some, we had some licensed professional geologists there with the Air Force.
My concern is the, how soon will it become usable at ground level, at the shallow well? Is it going to be contaminated forever?
I don't know. As an example, we have a, we have a chlorinated solvent plume that we have been working on the base to clean up since the mid, early 90s. And the projected cleanup time for that is still about 30 years out.
Do you have a plume map that goes all the way to Box Elder Creek?
We have, we don't have samples. We have samples from monitoring wells that were installed under a work plan that was vetted through the EPA and the state of South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. All three of us have to agree on the work plan. We have monitoring wells to Interstate 90. We do not have anything south of Interstate 90. We have a third phase that we're working on that work plan right now, and that will be looking at from Interstate 90 to just south of Box Elder Creek.
I have two more questions. One is, what are, have, does the Air Force have a record of all the firefighters that were in those test pits for the last 45 years, 60 years, whatever it's been?
I'm not aware of that.
Because each one of those gentlemen are now contaminated, and women. I'm sure that eventually we have female firefighters also. Have you talked with the school of mines about coming up with a means of transport to figuring out the way that the spread and transport of this material through the shallow gravels that are up?
No, we have not specifically talked with the school of mines here. But the Colorado School of Mines, I've been talking with them, and they are working on some treatment technologies for this.
We actually funded a program that dealt with groundwater.
Yep.
And it was in probably the medicine formation in the Minneleusahahn.
Okay.
And that developed a, a map of how quickly things go through. And that's the kind of thing that we need to have in this situation. And I want to thank Dan Buick for forecasting this, because in August, he said, what if we have an emergency? Is this an emergency?
It feels like it some days. It really has for the last couple of months here, because we're still trying to identify drinking water impacts to people, getting them on alternate water supply, which right now is bottled water in interim. And now we're working toward identifying treatment systems for people's wells. That should start here, probably the first part of January, we'll have the funding and the designs in place that we can start working with them to install these systems. And long-term solutions is to try and find a permanent solution of getting them to a municipal water system.
So the treatments, I was curious, filtration methods or chemical agents that will neutralize or diminish this?
Granulate activated carbon and reverse osmosis.
Are those effective properties? Been recommended to do that, or there's no, no use of this water? Can they bathe in it? Just don't drink it?
Just don't drink it. The only exposure pathway that the EPA has set numbers for is drinking water.
I wouldn't bathe in it.
One of the things brought out at the meeting was that you should, if you take showers, take short showers. I thought that was completely irresponsible.
Do you make it?
Shower.
Yes.
The temperature of water opens your pores.
Well, what they indicated, or what I took away, was that showering, even the vapor that comes off in your shower is going to be contaminated with this thing.
And the EPA really needs to get those numbers out there, you know, because there are several pathways that people have, you know, inhalation is one of them, ingestion, and then absorption through your skin. And the only one that we have is drinking water.
My last question would be then that, when did they come up with the standard of one part or seven parts per trillion?
In May of 2016.
How do they come up with that?
Yeah, was there a study or something that brought that on? Let's say, but three years earlier.
Well, in 2009, they set what they called provisional health advisories, and those numbers were quite high. They were like 2,000 and 4,000 parts per billion. And then in 2016, they come up with the health advisories, and it's still not regulated at this point. And how they came up with those numbers is they set that reference dose fairly low because as an average American, you have a lot of exposures to these compounds besides just drinking water. And this is the one that they could control.
Nathan goes up, and then you have come back, James.
I just had a couple of feeds off of Bob's questions and comments there. That gentleman that, or one of them, that was talking about exposures went so far as to say when washing your dishes, you should wear gloves at the meeting.
Yes, he did.
That, I mean, if that information wasn't supported, don't know why he would have said that.
You know, and then, but he did kind of step that back and clarify it in case you have a cut on your hand.
Good. I was also going to mention that I know an individual who has a very shallow well that's kind of right in the epicenter of this whole thing. His well is 30 feet deep.
Most of these are between 30 and 40 feet deep that we've sampled.
His is 30 feet deep, and he's supposedly had his well tested two times, and it's, both times it's come up showing nothing.
Yes. And, you know, and we have a person who as well, we just got the data back, they have two wells in their property, 100 feet apart. One they use for drinking water was above the health advisory. The other well is an irrigation or livestock watering well, and it's like almost virtually non-detect in that, and they're 100 feet apart. Lots of things, like the depth of the well, you know, like maybe one wall, or even where it is screened.
You know, I'm wondering, how much do you think lab error might come into play here? Because we're, we're talking about parts per trillion, and in my experience, I mean, I, I've, I'm not familiar with anything that, anything else that goes to parts per trillion. It's, parts per billion even was a challenge 10 years ago.
It was, yes.
And now we're talking parts per trillion. So we're 1,000 times more, or smaller than, than we were. And I'm wondering if lab error might have something to do with, with some of this. Do you, do you guys have, do you feel confident in your QA QC processes that you're getting accurate numbers?
Yes, we, the, the DOD, Department of Defense, has a requirement for all contracts, that the contract, that the labs that they use have to be DLAB certified. So they've got to have a special certification. They periodically send out line, you know, here, analyze this sample, because we know what we put in, and tell us what you found. And they got to be within a certain amount of error. And then we also have a QC program where we collect duplicate samples. So for every 12 samples we collect, we collect a duplicate from one location, and then they need to be within a certain, you know, parameters or close enough to each other. So that's how we QC to make sure. And then we also write what we call standard operating procedures, which is the standards that the people in the field have to follow for collecting these samples, so that every sample is collected identically the same, and try to minimize and reduce any type of cross-contaminations.
Then I had one other question. How much has Ellsworth budgeted to address this issue? How much has Ellsworth budgeted to address this issue?
This program is being centrally managed air force-wide, so Ellsworth doesn't get contracts specifically for it, it is within a contract for, you know, 10 or 15 additional installation will be in one contract. But I was told that they've got $25 million program for FY19. And Ellsworth, because we're getting this work going here, we get a pretty good share of it.
James and Ernie may have been wrapped up here.
Okay, I got two quick questions. Does all the phases currently listed also encompass both historic and modern wreck sites? Because the Air Force had several crashes in the late '90s, early 2000s.
Okay, yes, if you look on this thing here, and you see the circles on there?
Okay.
We went through and looked at all of Ellsworth's historical records, and these are the ones that we identified as being anything that was a, well, some of them were, this place was restored at New East Hilton, but some of these are crash sites and anything since 1970. So I can tell you, the one that's down here.
Where's the one from like 99 to 2002? Because that was off-base.
Yes, this one right here, that was the B1 that missed the end of the runway.
No, I'm talking about the KC 30, 135, or C130 that basically disintegrated.
One right here.
That was off-base.
It might have been before 1970. Because I've got a-
90s to 2002.
Okay, because I've got, this one is the, unfortunately, the pizza truck that drove off the interstate. Yeah, that was a sad deal. Here's the flight lines, we had small of them. This was a crash site here, this is a crash site, this is a crash site, and this one down here, so we had five crash sites that we identified. He said, what was the?
It was late '90s to 2002.
Okay.
There was a 135 or a 130. Because it was off the base.
Okay.
I believe.
135, or what'd you say?
A 135 or a 130.
It's got to be in records somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
From the late '90s, 2002, because I know my supervisor ran out there and-
Got it.
Just picking up a package.
Okay. I have-
And then the runway used to go both directions.
It did, yes, the old runway, yep, that one's been-
Yeah, since just after World War II.
Too. You can still find pieces of it sometimes.
Oh yeah, there's, there's pavement out there.
Yeah. Okay. Can I get the answer to you through Dan, because I have his contact information?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Ernie, a little more?
Mine's kind of a two-part question.
This is your district, or your area, right? I mean, this is mostly the order.
At that meeting that evening, it sounded like a crisis to me. It sounded like you weren't supposed to water your vegetables, you weren't supposed to water your lawn, you weren't supposed to wash your baby, you weren't supposed to feed your cows, you weren't supposed to drink it yourself, you weren't, it sounded like an emergency to me, anyway. And I know there are a lot of upset ranchers there.
They eat feed.
And a lot of homeowners are going to take a financial hit on this thing. Now, I know you have a budget for studying, and has there been any new talk about compensation for homeowners? They're going to lose an awful lot of value if they try to leave, try to sell.
No, we haven't gotten into that yet. I mean, our focus right now has been to mitigate drinking water and get people, because you know, bottled water works, but it's not the most convenient.
I, I noticed, and, and I'm sure they appreciate the, the water, and it says you're, you're going to work with property owners to design and install treatment systems. Is that going to be at the homeowners' expense?
No, that will be at the Air Force's expense. We will design, purchase, install, and maintain the systems.
That wouldn't be enough for cattle or anything like that?
No.
Has there been any consideration for putting a rural water system out there to serve these property owners that are affected, both for drinking water and for livestock?
And, you know, and that is one of the things that the Air Force is looking into, because we did contact the city of Box Elder about it, if we could connect to their water system, but they're about maxed out on their capacity right now, and all of these properties are outside the city limits. And so one of the things the Air Force is going to do is work with Box Elder to see how we can help them possibly increase their water capacity, and in exchange, please provide water to these folks, or water system to these folks.
I know they, I know that Box Elder has a contract with the city of Rappahannock City for emergency.
Yeah.
Situations, and I don't know if that's something you're, you're looking at, too, because the pipeline going out there is, is big enough.
And I had heard that, you know, out there, along country road, about a half a mile west of Bennett Road is Rapid Cities.
Yes.
And if maybe we could work with Rapid City and extend their water system out to that area? All these folks have a Rapid City address.
Well, Ellsworth buys their water from Rapid City.
Ellsworth gets their water from an allotment in factola. We pay for treatment and transportation to Ellsworth.
It's, it goes through the Rapid City system.
It does, it goes through the Rapid City system, yes.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay, no.
Yep, one more. Okay. Have you tested Box Elder Creek?
We did collect, we collected two samples from Box Elder Creek in the summer of 2017.
I must have missed that.
That's okay. One upstream of the base was non-detect, and one almost directly south of the base was about 99 parts per trillion, and we have plans to do additional sampling of Box Elder Creek here in the spring of 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melody.
Thank you.
Item 10, Ms. Murkey, update on C-Rap City assistance.
Okay.
You and James and Dan.
And Dan Malali, and then, and then our two consultants were there, too, Emily Martinez from HGE, and Dr. Murray was there also. They were provided ahead of the meeting with copies of the studies that we've, you know, the study that we, first phase of the study that we, we did. And so we had a very good meeting, I thought, a very positive meeting. There were three members there from the Public Works Department, Dan Cooney, he's Assistant Public Works Director, and Dave Van Clade, which I think most of us know, he's the Water Reclamation Superintendent, and then there was one staff member from the Engineering Department in Rappahannock City that was in attendance. I thought the meeting, and James can kick in, too, but I thought the meeting went quite well. You know, they, they're interested in, in participating, I think, with us, they were going to go back and check their budget to see where the money would come for, for some assistance. They asked us what we were looking for, for helping us, and, you know, basically, we asked them if they would, would go 50%, you know, pay for half of it, which would be 100,000 bucks. So, anyway, they're going to get back to us here after the first of the year. And, and talking to Emily and to Dr. Murray, if we approve the first reading, say, in our January meeting for this project, and then the second reading, the second vote would be, would that be in February or March? March. That was, that was-
Actually, we'll decide that tonight.
That, that would-
The meetings are going to be mostly around-
That would actually still work in terms of the timing of this project to move forward. So, that's kind of a quick summary, but I thought it went really well, and, and they're definitely interested. They went over the new sampling sites, and, you know, made possibly a couple wells downstream of the Water Reclamation Plan, so they seemed very positive and very interested.
That's encouraging. James or Dan, anything to add?
No. Give me a chip and a half, it would be fantastic.
Possible to be, too. Very well.
It'd be great if we get half.
Thank you. So, we're getting requests for break, but maybe 11 and 12 are dealt with as another continuous, is that what I'm hearing, maybe, is that a suggestion?
I can move that the 11 and 12 get moved to January for reconsideration.
How's, how's that going to work?
Any discussion on that motion? Continue 11 and 12 to January meeting for a first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if you say nay?
Nay.
Coach carries. We will take a five-minute break and come back to item 13. Oh my God.
Can I get home before Wednesday? Yeah.